All right. So we'll call the meeting to order. Bills and manifests are going around. We don't have any need for initial non-public session?
No, we'll need one at the end, but not now.
Okay. So we'll move into the public session. Opening public comment. Would anybody like to take this opportunity to address the board? No, you're good, Amy. All right. Would any board members like to take this opportunity to address the board? Then we're going on. We'll close the public comment session and move on to board business. We have minutes from our meeting from, it would be October 17th in our packet.
August.
August, thank you. August 17th, starting on page four. So our motion to approve the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on these? All in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Gary's three zero. Do we have non-public minutes?
Not, but we have special meetings.
Oh, we did have a special meeting from the 29th. If we approve those.
Where on?
Page three.
Oh, I skipped right over them.
You did.
Gotcha, thank you. Yeah, all right. So motion to approve the special minutes of the special meeting from August 29th. I'll second that. Any discussion on these? All in favor?
Aye.
Josh Carey's four zero. Believe that's all of our minutes. All right, so we'll move on to the assistant superintendent report.
My report's on page 14. I'll just go over verbally really quickly. Ms. Young, Mr. Byrne and I have developed a plan to cover the IEP meetings because you have somebody out on medical leave. The building administration will cover the day-to-day meetings and then Nate and I will fill in gaps for either some complicated meetings or meetings that conflict with their schedule. And hopefully by mid-October, we'll be back to normal with the IEP process. I've updated your census and made notes marking changes for your information. You look, you're at 66 special education students at Northwood School, which is up seven from June 30th. And you're up five at Co-Brown Northwood Academy from June 30th. And then you have a placement that shows as a plus-one, but you were aware of that placement before last spring. Round two of the post-outcome school surveys have been received and are, at this point, mailed to the families. When I wrote the report, they're being mailed. They're out. The big thing is this summer, Mr. Byrne and I took a look at all the legal changes in special education that happened last March at the state level and then created an updated policy and procedural manual. We always had a policy and procedural manual, but in this one, we added some additional information to help the special education staff be a little more independent when it comes to like what paperwork's required for each meeting and what the processes are to use for those. I did bring a copy. I wasn't going to bring a copy for everybody. I'll pass it around if you want to take a look at it. Here you go, Shane. The feedback from the administrators are like, "Thank you." They thought this was very helpful in all three schools. As you know, we had advertised for a speech pathologist, so three times since the spring. Had interviews, offered positions, people declined positions, re-advertised. By the end of the process, we didn't have very many qualified applicants. We're still required to provide that service for students with disabilities. I reached out to Strafford Learning Center, who were a member, and generally we get reduced rates, and they were short a speech pathologist. I reached out to Suresk down in Bedford, and they had a speech pathologist, and then she decided to take a job in a hospital, so I lost her. And as a last resort, I called Boothby Services, and they were able to provide us with a four-day-a-week speech and language assistant. Then I worked with the SAU speech pathologist, Mrs. Brown, who's in this building, and worked out a supervision plan, so we were compliant with the law and authorized the service. So now we have a four-day-a-week SLA, a contracted service, not an employee that's working on the direction of the speech path. And we think that will get us through the year.
Cooper, more expensive?
No, no. Well, I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. I had about $60,000 worth of benefits and everything else to work with, and this cost us $67. So it's not too outside the budget numbers, but it is more. I mean, you're paying...
It's a contracted service now.
It's a contracted service because I couldn't find an employee.
So it's gonna be like $67...
$67,000 instead of 60. Yeah, $7,000 more than what was in the budget for the employee.
Okay, so the $60,000 that was in the budget was including our fringe?
Yeah, yep, yep. So what we'll do is I just did find a second-year grad student, is in their last year, who's doing an internship at another school, so I will start conversations with that person about next year, and then when we have the applications open, she can apply, and hopefully we'll be able to fill the position. It's just gonna have to be a little non-traditional, the way that I do it, because what's happening is your speech path students are leaving college, and they might do a year in a school to get their clinical fellowship done and their three Cs, and then they move on. The other thing that's happening is when we look at private industry as opposed to schools, your speech pathologists are entering private industry at almost double what a school will start a speech pathologist at, so just economically. That's why we don't have an applicant pool. I think we need to have a discussion at the joint board level about maybe using a different model that pays more money since we have no applicant pools. But for now, we're covered, and I'll start working on next year. We did some restructuring of the special ed department. Now that Mr. Byrne is here, he is going to, eventually, although he started, take over the 130-plus meetings at Co-Brown, and I'll take over the meetings at Dover. And that should open up some time for me to work on some curriculum issues in special education, as well as some general education issues in my assistant superintendent role. With that, I'll update the board. Then I met with guidance and nurses yesterday, guidance yesterday, to plan out the family nights for the year. And we sent a little teaser out yesterday that some of your parents might have gotten or will. And then we talked about the competencies, the state competencies, the habit-to-work study, creativity, collaboration, self-direction, and started talking about how to interweave those, cross those competencies into the guidance lessons across the district, so they're beginning that work. Your 504 numbers are relatively static, and your homeless numbers, you have seven mentally mental eligible students right now. Any questions?
Yeah, just one. The increase of seven in Northwood and five in Co-Brown, I mean, that's a big jump. That's like 10% more. Is there some reason that happened?
Moving.
Moving, okay.
Yeah, it's not from the identification process.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, yeah.
I mean, maybe one or two, but when I pull those June 30th numbers and I pull your August numbers, those generally illustrate who's moved in, who's moved out.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Byrne? Thank you very much. Ms. Young.
Good evening. Our report begins on page 15. It's been a very interesting few weeks, but want to start out just really commending our staff and our community. You know, the change in schedule was a bit of a shock, and it took a day or two for people to sort of wrap their heads around it, and then it was game on, and everybody has been really helpful and cheerful and solution-focused. People are pitching in and doing extra duties, helping out in classrooms, bringing in stuff for the kids who are here for two-plus extra hours to do. I think perhaps most painfully, giving up prime parking spots along the side of the building to make parent pickup in the afternoon go a little bit more smoothly. So it's been really helpful for Adriana and me, for everybody to be pitching in like that. And we've also had a lot of offers of support and help and kind words from families. And so it's just a really nice opportunity for us to illustrate how Northwood can pull together when things go a little awry. And also really want to thank Bob in particular. He has taken the brunt of the heavy lifting so that Adriana and I can really focus on the kids in the building and doing things here, and so we appreciate that very much. So once school started, arrival and dismissal were interesting the first day, but we put some things in place and fixed it. Dismissal the first day took 35 really long minutes. But we dispensed with the requirement of parents signing out kids on the clipboard, which helped. The first day, we dismissed through parent pickup 147 kids, so that was 147 parents touching two clipboards to sign their kids out. So we're, you know, confirming that we know the identity and authorization to pick the kid up visually. If we're not sure of who they are, we are asking for identification, but we're no longer asking them to sign out. The bus times are still, you know, we've changed the routes 12 times in six days or something, so bus times are still being adjusted. Buses are coming in, you know, earlier than expected or later than expected, but we sent out a final draft of bus routes today, so I'm hoping that that will normalize. Bus drivers have been great. You know, they're, most of them don't know these kids at all, but they say nice things about them and, you know, smile at them and genuinely seem to like them, which is nice. So I would say arrival and dismissal, at this point, are pretty good. We've been able to get buses out of here. As long as the buses get here on time, we've been able to get buses out of here by 4:27 usually, which is good.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
How is the traffic flow going on drop-off and pickup?
It's been okay. There's, I guess, a little congestion happening at the Bow Street entrance because people are trying to go both ways. So I'm going to put, you know, it's tricky because it is technically a two-way street, but, you know, particularly with sports games, when people are parking along the side, it's making it challenging. So I'm going to put something in the Laker tomorrow, asking people to try not to come in that way.
No big backups in Route 4 as far as, you know, anything? Just that first day.
Yeah. Once we got over that, yeah, the morning has been going really smoothly. Adrian's been hanging out front, and it seems to go fairly well.
Yeah, I think it helps. I mean, one positive of the timeframe is that, you know, when it was the old time, there's a heavy traffic for people going to work, but now that traffic's all gone, so people can actually get out.
Gotcha.
So it kind of alleviates some of that pressure.
Thanks.
The morning supervision has been going well. We've had about, I had put 75 students a week ago. I would say it's probably up to about 80 students now on average. A big bunch come in right at 7:30 and actually are waiting a little before 7:30, and then we get another push around 9:15, 9:20, and then they trickle in anywhere in between. We have six staff members who are supervising, and that seems adequate for now, but we'll want to keep an eye on that. And the kids, I mean, they, it's a long day, so they complain a little bit about being bored or whatever, but they can bring something for them to do. As I said, staff members have brought in things to do, and then Bob has solicited donations from Walmart and Toys R' Us. So that's been helping a lot, and we hit the kids make thank-you cards for them that we'll put in the mail tomorrow. We also have just a brief sort of introductory update from Catlin Brown. Her formal name is Karen, but she goes by Catlin, just to avoid confusion. So a little sort of introduction from her, and then starting next month, she'll provide a monthly report, and I've asked her to attend a meeting once a month as well, so that you can meet her in person. She's, you know, been doing a nice job getting to know everybody and getting acquainted with the curriculum documents that had been put together last year. She did a little, that Thursday, was it that Thursday? I don't know. One of the days that we thought we were going to have kids that we didn't, so I guess that Thursday. I said, "Yuck, it's the professional development day. What can you do?" And, you know, with 12 hours notice or whatever, and she pulled something off and gave a little mini-workshop, so it's great to have her onboard. Athletics, I want to give a big shout-out to Nicole Billcliff, our new athletic director. She has worked wonders to coordinate with other towns to make sure that we can do, I would say probably 99% of our fall athletic season. So we'll be able to do all of our soccer games. They're starting a little later. They're all here, and they're a little shorter, but we're having them all. And then we are having all but one cross-country meet that was supposed to be here. So tremendous job to her, and what a way to start that new position.
And then two wins today?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then staffing, we are almost fully staffed. We have, we had a new Title I person start yesterday, and she actually had been hired to do special ed, and then one of our existing par-professionals requested to move, so we have Sean, who just started this week, coming in for Title I, and Linda Khan has moved to special ed. And then we have a full-time custodian joining us, so we just have one more part-time custodial position, and then we'll be fully staffed for at least five minutes. And then facilities update, Tom and his crew have been working hard. The building looks great and, you know, continues to look great. He has really been working hard on sort of sprucing up and beautifying the building, and if anybody has occasion to check out the upper playground, he painted some of the older climbing apparatus out there, and it looks really nice, and even the kids noticed that it used to be sort of spotted and boring and is now bright purple.
Don't forget the bird feeder.
I talked about the bird feeder last time, I think.
Good.
Yes.
Shout-out for the bird feeder. The birds love it, and they're pretty happy. They're gonna be buses for it.
All right, and then I have some additional stuff that I will pass around. If you could take one and pass. All right, you get to talk about open house.
Hello, everybody. Open house this year is...
I'd like to open it, please.
Okay, sorry, Gary.
Thank you for your question.
Does that work?
Awesome.
Good, thank you. All right, so open house is September 13th, which is next Wednesday. It is a little different from last year. It's six to seven instead of 5:30, 7:30, as the late start time. Don't really want to keep people here so long that they're passing out on their feet, so I figured we could do an hour. There won't be the barbecue, but there'll still be the raffle, so if you want to bring in non-perishable food, you get another raffle ticket, so two raffles, the same things in the community, you can win. Some other people that are going to be here, part of that N68 Hours of Hunger, Northwood Rec, the PTA, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and the library. I knew they did when I forgot. So I hope to see everybody there. It will be a great time.
We also have some fundraising proposals that just came across my desk yesterday for eighth grade. Kim Clemmons, the new eighth grade advisor, has been working hard to generate some additional ideas. So on the second, third, and fourth pages of this little packet that just went around, the first page is eight different fundraisers. Some of them would be, you know, sort of periodically throughout the year, like dress-down days for staff, one Friday a month or something, same for pajama days, school dances, hat days. And then there are two that she provided more detailed information on. That would be sort of bigger proceeds fundraisers, which are coupon book. Actually, I guess teen movie night would not be that big of a fundraiser, but she did provide additional information on that. 50/50 raffles and selling snacks during sporting events. So once you've had a moment to review those, we'd be interested in knowing if you approve them or not.
I'll move to approve these fundraisers, as written. Second. Any discussion on these?
Just, I know that if we can definitely get a lot of signs out of the no food in the gym.
Yes.
Because that's going to be a bone of contention once.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. fundraisers two, three zero. Thank you.
And then the only other thing I have for you is we received a Life Touch check yesterday from our percentage of the proceeds from last year's portraits. It's $676 that would go into the yearbook activities account, again with board approval.
Second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Josh Carey's.
All right, and that is all I have for you.
Anybody have any questions for our principal? Seeing none, thank you very much. It's my understanding that the policies that we're supposed to do tonight were accidentally, due to a clerical error, we got some old versions of them, so...
Yeah, we're going to re-present those on the September 21st meeting.
Sounds good, so we're going to delay those for now.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
Great.
It's because I was riding around with you all the time, putting barrel cones up.
All right, so we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
All right, I'll start on page 36 for the personnel report. I'll read the nominations all at once, and then if you can either motion for them all at once or separately, whichever you'd like. First is Lisa Fieldson as neck tutor, Robert Gould for a full-time custodial position, George Waldron, part-time custodian, substitute custodian, Sean Cotteray, Title I para, Linda Khan, special ed para, and Mary Gagny as a Title I para.
I'll move to elect these nominations. Second. Any discussion on these? From our page 36 of the packet. Looks like Mr. Gould must have some experience.
Yes.
That's good. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Josh Carey's four zero.
And the next are stipends. We've got Louise King, building leadership meeting, Donna Kelly, building leadership meeting, and then your mentor list for our mentor program, Vonda Cunningham, Lauren Dow, Louise King, Jen Lenharth, Fran Beckhold, and then Mary Gagny as the Title I project Questions on those?
Just a question about if this fits into our mentoring budget? I don't remember how many mentors we had.
Yes, I believe we had 10 positions budgeted.
And there's a couple more I'm waiting on the paperwork for, but yeah. I think we're within it.
All right. Just a transportation update. The routes have been modified any number of times. We've gone over them. We've taken emails and phone calls, numerous. I've worked with the bus companies many times at restructuring, and today we've put out what we hope is a final posting of all of the bus routes. We know they're not perfect. Part of the issue, again, is that we're drawing bus drivers running second routes from other communities, so we have to have the bus routes with some group pickups, some stops that we know are a little less than perfect, but we've worked through a number of kinks, and we've got those posted, and hopefully they're out there. I touched base with the bus company, Dale Transportation, today. We have one driver that we've got back. We've got another driver that I think we're going to have back full-time. We've got two more that are deep in training, and then we've got three more that are in process, that have filled the paperwork out. So I asked Kelly to send me an update, this was late today, she's going to send me an update of the names of the people that we have, the position that they're in in training, and some kind of anticipated date when they'll be fully trained. As soon as we get to the point where we have six bus drivers full-time, then we will go back to restructuring our routes again, and I'll bring it back to the board for consideration to put our start time back to normal. So that's in process.
So the, there's total of seven there. That one is a contracted, right?
Yeah, yeah. We've got one right now contracted through Durham Transportation. That's one of our Co-Brown routes. That is basically on a 30-day, we have them for 30 days, and then we can choose to re-up it if they still have availability. So at any point in time, that one can go away.
And it still stands that we're offering them the $4,500.
Yeah, we've got the, I brought a contract for Dale Transportation tonight. It's consistent with what you discussed and voted on before. The only change is that through all of the turmoil, they've decided that they are not going to be the ones that are going to front the $4,500 that we're going to reimburse. They said that that's causing too much confusion with their own drivers and having people from Barrington or Raymond or wherever causing confusion with their own drivers. So I called Gordon Graham and asked him how we could get that done, and he stated that the easiest way to do it would be just do a 1099, do it straight from us as a stipend, and we'll take care of the $4,500. That's what we said from the beginning, so that's not in the contract there, but that's how we can handle that.
So the change is the bonus program here.
Yes.
All right, so I wasn't here for this, but I believe this was voted on by the board previously, but it's been amended. I think we should go over the amendment and then re-vote the contract. You want to look at it? I can hand it around, but it looks like the only difference is that the bonus program is another, is the addition to what was before?
Yeah.
Says, "Bonus program, should the Northwood School District or SAU 44 decide to compensate drivers in the form of a sign-on bonus, said compensation will come directly from the Northwood School District and/or SAU 44. Should any other questions arise going forward, the district or transportation company will address immediately at this time." Does anybody want to look over the whole contract?
So we just make a motion for the amendment?
I would say this is a motion to approve this whole contract.
Yeah, because the costs in there are the same costs that you've already discussed,
Want to sit up? Thank you.
Thanks. If you ask the amendment that you read, I'm familiar with it. So I make a motion to accept the contract for the bus drivers.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the contract? All in favor of authorizing me to sign this contract with Dale Transportation?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
One opposed.
Repose, three, one. Josh Carey's. All right.
All right, the agreement with Durham Transportation, you've already seen that. They sent it up to me today, and it had Strafford, Nottingham, and Northwood on it, so I sent it back to them to revise. All of the numbers and everything is consistent with what we talked about before, so as soon as I get that back from them, I'll bring that to you as well. The training, I already talked about. We've got many that are in process, and as soon as we can get people in the seats and trained, then we'll restructure those as well. Just to piggyback off what your principal was saying a few minutes ago about the enormous amount of work that the staff is doing, and I just wanted to specifically cite a couple of people. Your building administration is taking on a huge load with kids coming at 7:30 in the morning and dismissing at 5:00, 5:30, whenever we get everybody out of the building, so I just wanted to praise them for their efforts. And kind of another one is Mr. Tom with opening the building early in the morning and then staying later to make sure that his staff comes in because of the time adjustments. I think that that needs to be recognized, too. He's been doing an outstanding job, so I just wanted to recognize them and say that that's much appreciated. And the last thing that I have is a statement I'd like to read into the minutes, if that's all right. "This is in response to the defamatory and deliberately misleading letter to the editor by Tim Giannabari. The transportation issue that we have been working through for the past four months has certainly been very complex. Despite the enormous impact it has had on the school day and despite the counterproductive actions of Mr. Giannabari, I continue to be impressed by the tireless efforts of everyone working together. The parents, the staff at Northwood School, which includes the teachers, the support staff, the administration, the custodian, and certainly everybody else in the building, the Northwood School Board, my entire staff at the SAU, the Northwood Police Department, and Dale Transportation are all dealing with a trying situation and looking forward. All of you have been excellent role models to our children in how we best deal with trying situations." The Northwood community should be proud of having an admirable can-do attitude instead of succumbing to the negative actions of a few. I assure you that I will continue to work diligently to ensure the best possible situation for our students."
So, yep.
That's it.
Alright, any questions for the superintendent?
How many kids are in the morning program?
Approximately eighty.
Eighty, thank you. Morning program? Take care.
Do you know, offhand you probably wouldn't, Jocelyn might, do you know if we added a stop on Route forty-three for the buses?
No.
Don't know?
That would be us.
We've had.
That would be them taking over that stuff, so we can focus on.
We've had a number of adjustments on forty-three. I would have to look, because we've sent a, we've adjusted a high school route to go down further on Route forty-three, so we don't have students, that high school run, we actually did further down Route forty-three, we did onto, what is it, Maston Drive, and then it goes up to across Route four onto Allen Farm. And then on the elementary side, we've got three stops down there.
You're talking on forty-three towards Deerfield?
Yeah.
You have a stop at Mrs. Edgcombe's house, you've got a stop at sort of the four corners there, Mountain Road and.
That's changed, that's now Upper Deerfield Road.
Upper Deerfield.
So, they're completely off forty-three now, they're up at Upper Deerfield Road, which is about a quarter mile up on to.
And then another one coming back on Lucas.
And then, and then the last stop is?
Deerfield Road.
Right.
And then you come back and you pick up on Lucas Bond. There's actually four.
So, I spent, Shane and I spent the better part of, that was when I was following the buses, when we were trying to figure out. So, and then there's also message sign out there telling people to slow down, and then there are barrel cones at each bus stop mark for the stop.
We've added a number of stops as best we can, not only on forty-three, but up Route four, there was a, gosh, a dozen changes or more that we've done there on various routes, so we've done the best we can with the rest of all of those.
Fantastic job.
Is your estimate for when we can, the drivers will be up and running and moving back to normal schedule still Thanksgiving?
Well, I've always said I'm cautiously optimistic about Thanksgiving, I'm crossing my fingers and hoping it's earlier than that. But as soon as we get the training done, I'll know more when I get the list of drivers from Kelly as to what the timeframe looks like. I've expressed that to Dale Transportation, I've talked to Paul Leather this morning from the Department of Education, I talked to Commissioner Ettleblow, and I told them all the same thing, the best thing you can do for us right now is to try to speed up that training process. Part of the issue is that, you know, the fingerprinting gets done, and then there's a time lag with that, and then the CDL usually takes the quickest, and then the bus driver training, Dale Transportation does a lot of the bus driver training, but they're so short-staffed that they're taking their trainers and putting them out on routes, so that complicates and slows things down a little bit, so the shortage is really affecting the whole process.
Any other questions for the secretary of office? Thank you very much. We have no new business committee reports, do we have any committee meetings?
Policy committee met today, will re-present the policies in the packet on the twenty-first, and we'll have four more coming at the October fifth meeting.
Okay.
Just to let you know.
Alright, thank you.
I think we're taking a break after that though, right?
Budget season, the board usually will decide that as a rule, like when we start cracking up into budget season, they'll tell me to put policies aside, so generally, yes, sometime October we stop for a bit. I would encourage the board that we finish, like if we have policies going first reading, and they're gonna go for second reading, let's let those policies get through second reading before we suspend our activity for budget season, because that was one of the minor complications tonight, was we found in the minutes that there was one, and then it just gets totally confusing for everybody. So, I think as a rule, we just need to finish those second readings, and then we'll suspend.
Makes sense. I'd like to see the strategic planning committee, had their retreat, I'm sorry, I missed that. Anybody got that, wanna give a summary of what happened there?
Came up with a draft vision statement, that was some good work. Started consolidating our strategic issues into a list, had some group exercises to go over those, I think we'll be presenting that at the next meeting in, what is it, September twenty-eighth, is that our next one? Twenty-something.
Oh, the twenty-eighth of the.
Yeah, the strategic planning meeting, yeah, is the next one.
Yeah, I saw your summary, that was really good.
Yeah, I just tried to squish them a little bit, they were kind of all over the place, so.
I thought they looked great.
Nobody else had any comments, so I assumed they were fine, but.
Do, what is the draft goal, I mean, the draft vision we're going with, you know? I don't have it with me. It was reasonably good, I thought.
To educate.
That'd be, that'd be short. Get the committee reports in there.
New business, committee reports.
Yeah, committee reports.
I had, I met with the pairs, well, one, and I forgot, I put it in my other purse, and then I took it out, 'cause I was like, oh, I don't need it till Thursday, so I will have those included for the next board, board meeting to approve the para clubs. And I believe, I had sent an email to, I just sent it tonight to Lauren Dow, she asked about the glee club for five hundred dollars for twenty hours. I believe there's still money in that line, if I'm remembering right, because we took out the eighth grade advisor and the maravista, but I just wanted to get confirmation on that before I brought it forward, but just to know too that there's a glee club that would like to, which we had last year, I think we had last year, for five hundred dollars for the pairs, I mean for the teachers. Yeah, there was a glee club last year.
Yeah, there was. Still this committee, how are we doing on the CIP?
Just from the last time we presented, I think.
I wasn't here before.
Yeah, we presented everything that was gonna be redone and put into the format to give to Joe.
Joe has it, and their CIP committee is adding it to their stuff, so they're talking about it.
Great.
Joe sent, Joe sent those back for some final descriptions in there, so I filled those, filled those in earlier this week and sent them back, so Joe should have a.
We're meeting with them this month, or September, right?
Yes, actually, it's the twenty-sixth.
Can we add that to the.
Yeah, I was gonna say that too, yeah.
So I don't forget.
Please do that. I'm gonna mention that too.
Yeah, right. Be like, don't you wanna come to my select board meeting now, I really don't.
Not really.
Twenty-six, you said?
Can you, wait a few minutes till we get to the end of the document, we only got whole business sheet.
Actually, it's whole business.
It's all business?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll just do it then, then. Alright, so we have our parking lot item, we have our meeting with selectmen coming up, the hallway steps and the front entryway, I assume we're on the CIP?
Yep.
Shall we?
Yeah, I thought we put that in the budget.
I think that was going in the budget this year.
Okay, so we're going, okay, so we're going out for bid, so that we'll have something to put in the budget.
Yes.
Right, so.
Yeah, we still, yeah, we gotta put out for bid, I mean, we got a general ballpark of how much it's gonna cost, but we don't have exact estimate, cost.
So, probably get on that, getting a bid out for those, as soon as possible, especially with budget season coming up, it'd be good to have that information. Anything else we need to put on the parking lot?
I know that, I mean, we're talking about budget stuff, I know the lockers, we were gonna try to put it into the budget.
I thought the lockers were on the CIP. Yeah, the lockers are on the CIP.
Well, just 'cause they're on the CIP.
They are, but I think they were identified that they were going to be in the budget.
Yeah, it was like a two thousand seventeen, eighteen issue.
See, when things get on the capital improvement plan, you've got a variety of ways to pay for it, you can either put it in your budget, you can go for a bond issue if it's large, or you can do a capital reserve over a number of years. You've also got your technology improvements in the, in the CIP, and that's going in the budget.
Over a number of years.
Over a number of years.
Yeah.
CIP basically just identifies all of your big-ticket items, so you can figure out how to spread them out and pay for them.
For that, I think we might have to, 'cause it's so much, I think it was thirty thousand dollars, right? Try to, we probably need what, two or three, is it three that we need to get at that price?
We can, we can do that and all those.
You have lots of money in other accounts, why don't you consider using one of them?
That's the plan.
We have all kinds of accounts, we have capital reserves where we're holding money, one of them is for building.
I thought that was emergency.
No?
Doesn't say emergency, it's things that we need.
That's the one that we've been asking the taxpayers to put money in each.
Yes, yeah, quite a few will like to use some of that.
For unexpected expenditures.
That's what I thought, it was unexpected.
That's how it was presented to the taxpayers anyway. I don't know the lockers are unexpected. Did you have something to go over with that?
Yeah, I just wanted to, we had talked before about the NEASC accreditation process, and I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, we're putting an awful load on our staff right now in our building administration, and a NEASC self-study, which is the first step, the application would go in by December, and then the self-study would basically take the remainder of this year. I would just like to bring it up for discussion, that I think that's a huge load to put on our staff under the circumstances with everything that's going on, and we might wanna think about bumping that off one year.
Can we bump it off if we've, have we paid for it, but can we bump it off if we've paid for it?
No, we really haven't paid for anything yet, so what we would do is, we would do the, for next year's budget, I think it's thirty-eight hundred dollars for the membership, and then thirty-eight hundred dollars for the application, so we could budget that money in for next year, and then the following year, which would be, what's that, nineteen-twenty, then you'd have to budget in probably ten thousand dollars for the visitation when they come.
This wasn't what the Warren article was about.
It was.
It was, I think the Warren articles were, was for twelve thousand dollars figuring in the initial membership fee, the application fee, and the visitation, but there's no way you're gonna do that all in one year, so.
Well, and I agree with what you're saying about putting it on them, but I feel like we asked the taxpayers for the money, they said yes, and then we're gonna say we're not gonna use it, I just don't think they're gonna give it to us again, unfortunately, and I'm not saying it's not a good idea to not do it, because I think it is a big load, but I'm just saying, you know, we asked the taxpayers for the money, they said yes, and then we're gonna say we're not gonna use it this year, we're gonna give it back to you because we can't use it.
You can't start.
It sounds like the visitation is the, is the largest, both of where money goes, 'cause when they come, they, you know, stay and eat and stuff, and we have to pay for all that, and we may not even get to that this year, even if we started now, from the sounds of things, this is what we're talking.
Well, I would say that, I would say that you won't get to that this year, because even in a normal year with everything where it's supposed to be, it's still gonna take more than a one, one school year for the application, the self-study, and then the visitation thereafter.
And if we don't use it for this year, we have to give it back. We should give it back, yeah.
It just means you'd have to budget into your budget, the amount for the initial stages, which would be the application and the membership for next year. I just bring that up for consideration, because it's, I mean, we're asking an awful lot of our staff and our.
How much would that be for just the application and membership?
I'm trying to remember, it was, I thought it was thirty-eight hundred, but.
So, we would use some of the joint, and then next year we would have the budget, like say, like seven thousand dollars to do the rest.
No, I don't think it's gonna be that much, I'm thinking, I didn't bring the figure, thirty-eight hundred sticks in my head, but I can't remember whether that's all of it or not.
So, or the other?
Everything but the visitation costs.
I think we just need an explanation from somebody besides Tim in the paper as to why we're doing this. I want the facts straight.
Why we're delaying it?
Right, and why we're not, why we're not using the money that they voted yes for, that we asked them for, I just want the facts straight.
Right, and we certainly could go forward with it this year as planned, you wouldn't do the visitation, I wouldn't expect that to happen even on a perfect year, it takes longer than that to go through the process, but like I said, I just bring it up for consideration because it's, it's an awful big load on your staff to do that.
Can we bring it, is it too much to think about it and bring it up the next meeting?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I wouldn't wait too long, because we need to get the application, and if we're gonna do it this year, but, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put that in and waste the application money if we're not ready for it.
Right.
Right, so let's put that on the agenda for, for next week, so we can make some sort of decision, and let's leave it on the, add it to the parking lot too, yeah, maybe come back with some of the numbers, and maybe, maybe some estimates as to the number of hours that it would require from staff as well, so we can hopefully come to have enough information to make a decision next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, school board timeline for, we're talking more business, September. School board policy books, review of board goals, we've done that, prepare notifications, discuss budget preparation and budget development, so that's, we're gonna go forward to, bring up soon is budget. Alright. Anyone have anything for, for the timeline, any discussion there? Okay, so we're mostly through our agenda here, I do have something, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to take this opportunity to make a few motions just to clarify some of the situations that we've been having, both in school and in the newspaper, and kind of give some protection for, for the board and the district, so. First off, I'd like to just make a motion to reaffirm per policy BBAB, the rules and duties of the board chairperson, section one, part six, it says, "Be the public spokesperson for the board at all times, except as this responsibility is specifically delegated to others." And furthermore, that's the policy, and furthermore, I'd like to acknowledge that this responsibility extends to the posting of announcements, agendas, meeting minutes, and summaries, and other district-related data, such as budgets and test results, to newspapers, webpages, and social media sites. So, that's my motion.
Second.
I think it's something that we've been doing before, but I just wanna make sure we have it in the minute size. Any discussion on that?
What was the motion exactly?
So, the motion is to affirm per policy BBAB, rules and duties of the board chairperson, section one, part six, be the public spokesperson for the board at all times, except as.
Now, I've heard the policy, that's already the policy.
That's the policy, yeah, I'm just restating the policy.
Okay.
And then, and furthermore, to acknowledge that this responsibility, so reaffirm that policy, is part of the motion, so it's two parts, to reaffirm that policy, and then to acknowledge that this responsibility extends to the posting of announcements, agendas, meeting minutes, and summaries, and other district-related data.
And that's still part of the policy?
No, that's not part of the policy. I'm not making a new policy here, I'm just looking for a statement from the school board, basically.
Do we got a second?
Any other discussion on that?
I guess I'm confused, you're adding to the policy?
I'm not adding to the policy.
So, that, everything that you just read is the policy?
No, the policy says, in section one, part six, the policy says, "Be the public spokesperson for the board at all times, except as this responsibility is specifically delegated to others," that's the policy.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm saying, I'm moving that the board recognizes that, reaffirms that they agree with this, and then furthermore, to acknowledge that this responsibility extends to the posting of announcements, agendas, meetings, summaries, so on.
But that's not part of the policy.
It's not part of the policy.
No.
But it's what you've been doing for a matter of two years.
Yep, we, we.
Even though it's not part of a policy, so I'm just curious, why don't you, do you have a policy person, why don't you make a policy?
We could do that, if the board wants to.
Well, I mean, that's what would make sense, I'm gonna vote against it anyway, because, you know, most boards, what they do with the chair is the chair asks permission when he or she wants to speak. when he or she wants to speak on behalf of the board, and that would be the right way to do this, as far as I'm concerned, so, I'm just thinking on, you know, the--
You sign everything Northwood School Board in the paper.
So, I'm talking--
No, you have a, you have a, when I speak in the paper, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board.
You do not say that.
So let's, let's keep this to this discussion for now, we can bring that up later, so.
So my, my point is, is simply that you've been doing that for a year and a half, and, and it would have been simple, I, I've never understood it, because had you asked permission for the board to do almost anything, they would have given it to you, at least, the majority would have. I'm just finding it quite curious that you're coming at us now, so--
I'd like to go back and say that we did give him permission to post on the, the website.
We did, right, this is a reaffirmation of stuff--
You can show me in the notes where he was given permission.
And that's why I'm doing this now, so that's, we have it in the minutes, and it's set in stone.
He was never, never given that.
It was, but, okay, that's fine. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain, I'm still in.
Motion carries three, one, one. Here, you can have a copy of this. Okay, also, in light of the letters that were published, and did mention some Northwood School Board, and in light of the fact that some of this could potentially lead to litigation, I think it's our duty to, on the school board, to distance ourselves from that, so I do have an announcement that I'd like to have the board approve and submit to the paper as Northwood School Board, and I'll give you each copies of this, and then we'll read it. So this is what I would like to, the school board, to approve this as an announcement, and, and give permission to place in Suncreed Valley Sun, and the Forum, and any other situations. From the Northwood School Board, September 7th, 2017, state law makes it the duty of the school board to provide at district expense, elementary and secondary education to all principals who reside in the district. School boards are required to implement state laws pertaining to public education and to carry out the rules of the State Board of Education. The school board derives its authority from the New Hampshire Constitution, New Hampshire statutes, and the rules of the State Board of Education. The school board functions through duly operated, duly adopted policies and actions approved at board meetings. Individual board members have no authority to act on the behalf of the district or the board. No individual member has the authority to speak or act for the entire board, except when specifically designated to do so by board action. The school board is making this statement to make it clear that the members of the school board, district staff, and the public, I'm sorry, to the members of the school board, district staff, and the public, generally, that only the board acting as a whole has the authority to take official actions for the district. The individual statements of the board members, whether they occur in public meeting, social media, in letters to the editor, or any other fashion, are the responsibility of the individual board members and not the full board. Board members alone are responsible for their individual conduct and their actions taken outside their scope of office.
So moved.
Any discussion on this?
Where did this language come from? Did you write it?
I did not write it.
No, it came from Gudomski and crew, but it's fairly well-written.
Very well-written.
Any discussion?
I have some letters on the other.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Additionally, I have a letter that I would like the Northwood School Board to approve, this letter would be from the Northwood School Board, it would be addressed to each and individual, each and every individual member of the school board, so the five of us, that I'm making a motion that the school board accepts this letter and, and issues it to all of us, all right? The letter says, dear sir or madam, please be advised that the school board derives its authority from the New Hampshire Constitution, New Hampshire statutes, and the rules of the State Board of Education. The school board functions only through duly adopted policies and actions approved at board meetings. Individual board members have no authority to act on district of, on behalf of the district or the board. No individual board member has the authority to speak or act for the entire board, except when specifically designated to do so by board action at a meeting held in compliance with New Hampshire's right to know law. Further, be advised, the statutory indemnification for damages contained in RSA 31105 and RSA 31106 only applies when the indemnified person is acting within the scope of their employment or office. Individual board members may be solely responsible for their individual actions, statements, and comments that are taken outside the scope of office. In order to avoid confusion by staff and the public regarding the individual authority of board members, we would like to request that all board members refrain from signing their name, along with an indication that they are members of, or officers of the school board, unless the letter, email, or posting is approved and signed by the majority of the full board. We also request that each board member include in all individual emails or letters regarding the school's business issues the following statement. This email letter is not approved by the full school board, it represents the thinking expression of the author only. Please be advised that any individual email letter by a board member directed to the superintendent or staff may be ignored and not, need not be responded to by the superintendent or staff, unless the communication pertains to the board's members' own children or individual board's members' business, not board or district business, with the district. Sincerely, Northwood School Board.
So moved.
Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Abstained.
Abstained, all right, motion carries three, one, your letters.
I would have liked to have this before the meeting, actually, to have a chance to process it, that's why I abstained.
Understandable. Get out, we can bring it up for our revote.
Thank you.
This is--
Not someone who abstains, Cam.
Well, we don't go by the, we don't go by the exact rules of order, this is a letter to me, so we've all obtained a letter of this, really what we're doing here, what I'm trying to do here, is I'm trying to protect the school board from, and the taxpayers, from problems that could occur if litigation begins, and save us the cost. If people are making statements outside of the school board's purview, those statements need to be individual statements and not look like they're coming from the school board, otherwise we get in trouble. And this is basically, this letter that the school board is giving each of you is a warning, you know, that this, this is not, should not be done, it gives us deniability, I guess. All right, I'd like to make one further statement from the Northwood School Board, I'd like asking the board approval for, and approval to post in the Suncreed Valley Sun and the Forum and other places. Text is, in response to Tim Jandiver's recent letters in the Suncreed Valley Sun, the Northwood School Board wants to make it clear to the public that we do not agree with the content of these letters, these were not statements from the Northwood School Board, and they should not have been signed as such. We find Mr. Jandiver's letters to be inaccurate and defamatory, and in no way is he supported by the Northwood School Board in making these statements. He does not have the authority to speak on the, speak for the board on this or any other matter. Any letters published or, or statements made are his opinion and his responsibility alone, and not the opinion or statement of the Northwood School Board.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sounds good to me.
Any opposed? Abstained?
No, I'll go without one.
You, you and Amos?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll give this to you as well. All right. Future agenda items, we will talk about the accreditation process, anything else that people wanna talk about in the next, next meeting on the 21st? Is the CIP--
I'll bring that up in committees.
Does the CIP finalize enough that we don't need to review it before we meet with the board?
No, we sent it over to Joe, and he's putting the rest of it together, so I think it's good.
So with that?
I think it's good.
And if, I mean, we're gonna put those off a bid, if, probably not gonna come back by then, but, the lockers and the front steps, so--
Yeah, we'll have those ready for when we start developing the budget.
Okay.
I'd like to see the entire bus issue looked at, as I stated in my letter, I know that at least two week people are going to file right to know, wanting to get emails and stuff, but it, it's nice to whitewash it, but it, it really was handled quite poorly from beginning to end.
So says you.
So says I, that's right, and so far, I'm still a board member. I, I really think, like an ex-school board member mentioned at, at the meeting, when they were all beating us all up, which was quite embarrassing, that we really should have an after incident look at this and decide, you know, what was done right, what was done wrong, take a look at some of the things that went on, I, I think it'd be very important to take a look at that.
Yeah, I agree with that, so let's, let's start--
So do I, because I think the what went wrong was your letter to the editor that took our, took our drivers away.
Let's stick with the agenda items, so let's put on the agenda that we're going to do a, we'll--
That's actually with you?
Yeah, well, not, let's not, maybe, plan for it, you know, plan for the--
You're gonna, to do it right, you're gonna have to include people that are not biased--
That's why, that's why we're gonna plan for it. It's a healthy thing to do, so let's do it, let's do it.
I think Tim shouldn't be involved at all.
All right, our future meeting's coming up, we have our regular board meeting September 1st, September 25th is a joint board meeting the next, with the, with the SAU, the day after that is our Selectman, joint meeting with Selectman, which we'd like to get on this next time, so we don't forget, and we have board meetings on October 5th and 19th. Is there any closing public comment? This boot girl, come on, very quiet.
I just think, thank you for all you've done, I truly appreciate it, other than if you guys could give me a cup of coffee at 3 o'clock, I'm okay with it, but by 3 a.m. I'm tired, so, but thank you.
Any board members like to take this opportunity to address the board?
I would.
All right.
Specifically to Mr. Tim.
Three minutes.
Okay, please do time me.
I will.
Please do not take this as you are getting my goat, I just wanna make, set the record straight for a few things. I did not yell a dozen times at anyone. There was a room full of people, and the gentleman that was having the issue was in the back. I simply stated that all questions and concerns should be sent to the SAU, and as you were present at that meeting, I think you would remember this. The person spoke out of turn, and I specifically said at the start of the meeting that there would be no public comment at this meeting. You seem to forget also that the letter to the editor, the, was really what put us in this position. We had drivers until your wonderful letter was in the paper. That letter put the children, parents, guardians, school professionals, SAU, and school board in the position that we're in. Please start pointing your finger back at yourself, please get all your facts straight, because you never do, and if, if this is, if you'd wanna get my goat, you got my goat, there you go. You can have it and keep it. I'm sure a lot of people will give you their goats, too.
I'm ready as a goat. All right, thank you.
There you go.
Any other board members like to take this opportunity to address the board?
I just wanna mention the, the, and that's one of the things that I'd like to see come out, after several months of negotiating with these drivers, we had nobody, and for people to say that we did is just a pile of baloney, they, they were here and not here, and, and then gonna drive and not gonna drive, they were over to Dale, then came back to us, and, and that, that, that's just all a bunch of baloney, that we had those drivers,